Great, I'll call the meeting to order. Are you on? Did you want that again? Do it again. Do you want to do solomos? Call the order. All right. The vision. Welcome to the Vailmont Village Council Meeting for the regular council meeting, May 22nd, 2012. Shortly after 7:00. The vision of our council is striving for a vibrant and balanced community and our mission is to serve the community and embrace opportunity. So, we're called to order. And the first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. And we've got some extra items that we've had the chance to peruse. Has everybody taken a look? And if I could just throw in there, I'd like to throw on one extra item at last minute because I just saw Kathy McLeod and realized we hadn't thanked her for some work she'd done on behalf of the community as well as Shirley Bond. I'd like to bring those to your attention under action items. Yes, fair enough. Here we go. So, can I have a mover to move Dallas Bullock, Councillor Bullock and Councillor Salt? Move that the agenda be adopted as amended, all in favor? Minutes of the previous meeting, have you had a chance to take a look at the minutes and see if they're valid and complete and accurate? Councillor Salt? Councillor Latimer? And all in favor? Done like dinner. Any opposed? No, great. Just checking, she didn't raise her hand. Okay, and so we're moving on to, there's no delegations tonight, no committee of the whole. No one finished business, as usual, because that's how we run here. And we're going to correspondence for action, action items. 8A. So, we're on pages 7 and 8, but we really need to amend those pages. So, if everybody's there. It's actually 9 and 10 on your PDF. This item for ICBC. What action do you councillors want to take on this item? If anything. There's an opportunity for consultation and engagement and I just thought some of us had real issues. May, yeah. I don't know. May 29.
May 29.
Oh my God, that's right. Next week. That's too bad. Does anybody in any of these other cities?
Can I just make a comment? I will be talking with ICBC here on Thursday. I have them coming here to talk to me, so maybe I can ask them about this.
Okay.
If there's any questions.
Very good. I know.
They'll be here at 9:00 in the morning on Thursday for those that want to have a chat.
Direct consultation. Excellent. Okay. So, that, we can just take that as direction? Or is that?
Just for information.
For information. So, not an action item requiring a resolution. The next up, another chance for consultation. Sorry, excuse me. I had some pizza for dinner. Okay, right on. So, BC Hydro, there's an integrative resource plan for public consultation on that.
That's two weeks from today.
Is anybody in a position to attend this thing? I realize everybody's really busy. And I figured, I wanted to bring this up and I have some notes here. We're, a lot of our business is with BC Hydro after today's announcement, more than ever. It's a good chance to make connections and discuss geothermal and future projects, although I guess we just did have their ear all day today. So, maybe we don't need to attend, but if anybody can think of a member of the public who has a vested interest that would want to attend. Not for us, but just generally. Okay. I'm not seeing any bites, let's move on to the next item. We'll take that under information. We've got here a piece from UNBC. They're interested in establishing an endowment for the Community Development Institute. At NCLGA, I had the chance to speak to Marlene Morris. Very interesting project, I think it could help Vailmont just the way, like, right with the issues that we're looking at and provide the kind of insights we need. Now, they're asking us to write a letter right now, but I believe on June 4th, we have a chance to speak to another one of these, somebody else from the project and get even more information on it.
Is that the meeting we have on the 4th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I also talked to Marlene Morris at the LGMA conference in Victoria when I was down there. She's given me a big package. I would like to take and review that, maybe I could bring back a report to council on how we could participate or if we should, if that's all right with council.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So, if you want to refer that back to staff?
Let's refer that back to staff. Can we have a motion to do that?
Can we refer that back to staff?
Councillor Blanchett? And Councillor Bullock, sorry to cut you off.
It's okay.
Okay. Now, we've got the minutes from the tourism Vailmont, minutes of the regular committee meeting and of May 8th. And they always tell us what to do. And what are they asking? There's some recommendations for council.
Number 11.
Number 11. That, a letter from Toden's 10-year Tourism Strategy be sent to council for ratification. Is council interested in ratifying the 10-year Tourism Strategy?
Yes.
Me too. Councillor Bullock? Councillor Latimer? I'll take that. And all in favor? I was present for Glenn Mansiek's presentation as well. And what, what a firestarter, eh? I mean, those guys are rocking it. They really know what they're doing. And it'll be interesting to see what comes of that.
We just met Jasper a couple of days ago, trying to envelop them into the, into our region.
Awesome. And you know, that came up at a meeting I was in today and everybody was like, "But it's crossed boundaries." What happens? And it's kind of like, "Okay, guys, we're moving out of that."
It would be in our best interest definitely to have them in our boundary.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Okay, and so we'll move to the...
Still have two more to go.
Oh, we've got two more, yeah. Before we get to the amended items. Okay, so we're moving on to item E, Sindra Gurnan, a letter regarding dust and traffic problems on Cypress off of 14th Avenue. And the concern is, is that there's a road that's not legal and there's some dust issues and there's some concerns expressed and wondering if the village can be a partner in reducing the dust problems on that road. And I think we've got an answer to that. There's some information from staff.
And I have a further, if you wish.
Okay, sure.
Worship, I did talk to both Sindra and her husband today about the problem here. And one, their biggest problem is they live on Cypress, this has been an annual thing. It's a road that has no residency beyond where the pavement ends and it goes down to 17th. All along the, I think it's 13th where there's a bit of trailer parks first and then there's some houses at the back of the cul-de-sac. And people are using it just to go around, escape out that route. But that road has never been paved and it won't be until a developer develops that area. So, they would just like us to work with us. We have recently put some calcium in that down, so it's not a problem right now, but as the year progresses, they want to make sure that the dust levels are kept to a minimum. I would like to take some time to investigate the possible closure of that road completely because it would reduce our maintenance costs and some other things. So, I'd like to bring back a report to council if, how that would work or if we could do that.
I think it would be wise not to pay to maintain roads we don't even have yet. So, no, I appreciate that, I think that's right.
So, I think I'd just like to bring back a report and then I can work with these residents to come to a solution there.
Okay, right on. So, the immediate concerns have been addressed and then staff is working on a long-term solution. That sounds great.
And if you want to just refer it back to staff for updated reports?
Okay. Councillor Blanchett? Councillor Salt? Excellent. Great. Okay, one more item on the regular correspondence for action items before we get to the amended. It's the Wildfire Protection Prevention Committee. And there is again, a recommendation, item 9, from their minutes from the May 15th meeting, is directed towards us. Is, they are recommending council accept the resignation of Byron Chriselbrink from the Wildfire Protection Committee and advertise for a new member.
I'll move to accept the resignation to advertise for a new member?
I wasn't going to let Byron go that easy, but...
Well, I think it's going anyways, so we have any choice.
Okay, Councillor Latimer? And Councillor Salt? All right. And all in favor? Okay, losing a good man. Now, on to the other additional items here. So, there's a letter here asking from the Vailmont Secondary School. Omar Medina has made it to the Provincial Track and Field Championships. And they're asking for some support. Yeah. He's a motivated kid and...
He's a good kid.
He's a great kid, yeah. As far as kids go. But let's have a discussion. Councillor Salt?
My biggest concern is how is our budget doing for these grants and aims that we have?
We have $6,000, or I mean, there's $1,000 in the fund and you've spent 600.
Okay, so there's 400 left?
And that has to last the year, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Although...
Although we don't have to grant. We don't have to do a full amount.
Yeah. And in fairness, I think a lot of the school sports get started a little bit late, so there will be some in December. But usually all the basket, no, the basketball girls or the basketball teams start up usually in the spring, like that's how the school year, it takes them a while to get things started. So, we have like dealt with, I think, the bulk of the sports programs issues. That's not the only people we serve with this. Yeah, that's right.
They don't ask for a amount, just any kind of donation?
Yeah.
Does our policy stipulate an individual amount?
200, right? And it gets up to 200. But he has qualified for the provincial championships, so it's definitely in the policy.
Could we give him $100?
I think...
I'd support that.
Yeah, since he's responsible to get himself to and from, buys his own groceries and manages day-to-day living as a 13-year-old.
What a 13-year-old.
I think $100 would be...
Let's give him $113. Okay, motion please. Councillor Bullock? Councillor Salt? All in favor? Okay, and good luck to Omar.
Congratulations Omar.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah. Administrator Dollogis said we put our expressions of excitement in the letter, which is great. The next item is a letter seeking permission to set up a tent in Centennial Park on June 4th from 12 to 3. And they're very organized and have insurance. And it's for the Columbia Basin Alliance for Literacy.
Make the motion that we accept this and allow the permission?
Super. Okay. Councillor Blanchett? Councillor Bullock? All in favor? Great. And next, we have before us a Village Development Committee Use Agreement Committee Terms of Reference. An amended terms of reference.
That's going to come out further down in the agenda.
Really?
No, it's your...
It's where on the CBT?
No, it's on your Kathy McLeod, your additional item that you added.
Kathy McLeod.
No, he said he added it.
Oh, okay, right, 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 right. Okay, so a couple more action items.
Just one.
Nope, we got Kathy McLeod was added to our, so it's got to be in here.
Well, these computers ain't helping. All right, fair enough. So, we'll have to start doing electronic addendums, that'd be cool. Zippity zap. Yeah, we're all digital, man. Okay, so, oh, the other two items, I just came back from a meeting in Blue River, it was the follow-up to the Jobs Tourism Innovation Economic Roundtable for the Valley. And some big, big things were announced there. One is pretty obvious, is that that ministry is totally supporting the Vailmont Glacier Destination Resorts in all manners that they can do. And I just want to laud that organization for doing it. And I also want to bring people's attention to, what we've got is just the most amazing, I think, balanced government approach. It's not just them trying to ram the project through, they're actually speeding us through, they're giving us government help to get through all the stages of, like, the legitimate way that this thing needs to unfold. You know, sometimes governments get excited and they want to do stuff in a hurry, but they're doing it, they're just lining everything up in such a fantastic way. The staff has been working really hard. And, you know, we said, they said early on is that we're not going to give you, you know, we're, this is not about, it has never been about giving the community money or some sort of fat cat pork award where there's some sort of job creation thing or something like that. It's really about allowing us as a community development, finding the projects that we've got here and helping us speed along our way because we're in such a crisis. And they've just done a fantastic job and it's, yeah. And so, on that, I would like to send a letter of thanks certainly to the three provincial ministers who've been so supportive. That would be Terry Lake, Shirley Bond and Minister Pat Bell as well. And just express our gratitude. And also a letter to MP, Member of Parliament Kathy McLeod, who really got the whole thing started. And actually, Minister Bell said today that it was that idea of the roundtable started here in this room that made this, it sort of set the template for what they've done in a few other communities too. And it's really neat, it's really neat. Sorry, I was going to say this piece where they said that they weren't going to give us money, they were just going to give us help. If you calculated the amount of like professional staff time from top executives in the branches of forestry, jobs, tourism, innovation, resort development, it would be an astronomical bill if you had to go and hire those guys for the wages that, you know, that we've received. So, it's just been a tremendous gift to Vailmont and a real show of faith. And our job as a community is to try and ensure the success of those projects and make sure they turn around and take advantage of it, you know? And share our success with other communities, which we will do.
So, we're going to make a motion to send the letters of thanks and appreciation?
Amen. Councillor Blanchett? Councillor Bullock? All in favor? Great. I'm sorry, there's another item, very quickly. There were some issues in the community around, and I really want your feedback, maybe this is appropriate, maybe it's not appropriate, it wasn't really a council issue, but it was something where, as mayor, I knew of some people who are working in hotels who are having a really tough time with immigration matters and were sort of caught between, they were in, they were in sort of a bad place where they'd come here for jobs and were unable to get new visas to work and it's a very complicated process and a really tricky one and kind of a dangerous one because what happens is if you, you get your family here in Vailmont and you can't really afford to work, then there's a temptation to work illegally, potentially you could be expelled from the country, you know? And Kathy McLeod did some of the coolest constituency work that I think has been done and really got involved with all the levels of government. And it's, see, it's not really us, but it's everybody, you know? It's not, it's not in anybody's jurisdiction really to like really hammer these things home because it involves the police. It involves the temporary foreign workers themselves. Everybody's got to cooperate and create this sort of safe place and work together. And it's just been a tremendous success and I really hope that things are changing in Vailmont where temporary foreign workers really have a good shake at staying here and the rules are very clear and so that we can proceed with, you know, in a just way. So, I would also like to mention in our letter to Kathy McLeod, thanks for her help on that file for the, on the temporary foreign workers. But I put that out there because I realize it's not really a council, it's council issue and I don't want to politicize this, you know, place of business or whatever.
Myself, I would like to leave that as a separate issue and just address the letters that we're going to send on the one issue and then keep it...
And then do another, would you support a separate letter to, on this issue?
Yeah.
Or would you allow me to write a letter to Kathy McLeod and express my thanks to that? Maybe I could bring it back to the next council meeting? We could see if it's appropriate.
That might be better.
I would support it because we deal in my business with a lot of the temporary foreign workers.
So, you see it all the time?
And yeah, and she was a big help with a lot of issues that we were having in just getting things put through the immigration department over the last seven years, six, five years, sorry. So...
I appreciate that.
Well, I think it's an issue that we have to start addressing because it's so prevalent here that I would like to support, seen it, dealt with. And if Kathy is on our side to do that, I think we're very lucky to have somebody working on that for our honor.
Just make a recommendation that we just have the mayor write a letter, we'll send it out to council for final review. Once you've sent it back that it's okay to proceed, we'll send the letter. Does that?
Okay.
Does that meet with your...
So, motion to proceed like that? Councillor Blanchett? Councillor Salt? Thanks. And it's great that we get to bring up that issue in this council chambers on VCTV and, you know, address it in the light of day. I think that was all the additional items. So, moving along, let's have a motion to accept the information items. Okay, Councillor Blanchett and Councillor Bullock? And then, what are the items? I'll, we'll receive them after we deal, after we comment with them on them. Does anybody have any comments or things they'd like to bring up from information items?
I'm just going to congratulate you on your new position.
Me too.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Director of the Columbia Basin Trust Board.
Good job.
300-page agenda. Didn't tell me it was going to be like that.
Was it elected now or was it just because you showed up? Was there an elective process to reconsider?
I'll explain it because it's complicated, but very quickly, each regional district that's a part of the Columbia Basin Trust nominates a director to the board. And there's only 12. And the Columbia Basin Trust is a huge and very, I'm going to say very powerful and organization. Now, typically, it's been the mayor of Vailmont because you see in the whole regional district of Fraser Fort George, there's only one community in the Columbia Basin Trust and then one official on the regional district of Fraser Fort George who actually lives within, so if somebody lived in Vailmont-Renn for Area H, that would be a sort of a different story. If they lived within the basin, then there'd be the ability for them and maybe there'd be a runoff or some sort of arm wrestling competition. Yeah. But anyways, but by virtue of being elected as mayor, I get to sit on the board. Yeah. Thank you. It's a big deal. A great organization. Okay, if there's nothing else? Oh, yeah?
The iCompass? So, can we have, can staff please look at that just to get more information on it?
Excellent. Okay, and that's just direction for staff? I don't think we need to do anything official with that? Okay. Good, and that's it? Anything else? Total transparency here, guys. All right. Motion to accept the information. I mean, all in favor of accepting the information? Okay. How about that reading file?
Once again.
Just amazing. Motion to accept the reading? Okay. Councillor Bullock, Councillor Salt, all in favor? Okay. Administration reports. Now, we're on to the Community Use Agreement, pages 45 and 40 to 47. And... Amended terms of reference, so I'm going down to...
47.
What happened to page 43?
They're all different from here. So, it's page 47.
Yeah. Okay, so let's have a little discussion. This is actually a pretty important thing for the village. Who is on this committee and can somebody speak to it from that committee?
I'm on this committee. And we've only, I've only attended one meeting. We've started, we're picking our members and setting up our board and who's going to be chair will be decided on our next meeting, which is Thursday. It's a good group of people, everybody has an interest in the school. There's some really good ideas actually that came out of the meeting to try different things, so I think it's going to be good.
Great. Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the terms of reference for the Community Use Agreement Committee as noted.
And Councillor Salt, second? All in favor? All right, good. Well, that's great, that's a great document, thanks for your work on that. And I predict really good things. Next on the item, this is a very exciting one. So, we're into the Economic Development Officer Report. And we have before us a memorandum of understanding with Borealis GeoPower regarding a collaborative step-by-step approach to identify the roles and responsibilities of Borealis and the village to create an excess heat transfer agreement. And there's a lot of info there. And I, did we want to have some discussion on this? I myself had a couple of questions on it. Are there any other questions about the agreement?
You go first.
Okay, sure. I just had a look at it and I just, I just had a couple of questions about what happens after five years, it wasn't really clear to me. And I just want to confess my complete ignorance in memorandums of understanding. I really don't, I really don't get them. But I felt, and I felt, okay, legitimately, before we sign this thing, and it's not a really big rush, I'd like for my own understanding, just to get some more reference, look at other people who've signed agreements like this, it's not totally unique in human history, and just sort of see and make sure that it, you know, that it serves our mutual purposes. I'm sure it will. I have great faith that Borealis GeoPower is negotiating in good faith. And yet, I just feel this is where, this is really important for Vailmont, so I'd like to really understand this one.
So, it should almost be, and it should almost say for a minimum of five years with the ability to renew after that, right? Or something along that line?
I'm not sure why it doesn't, why it doesn't say that. And maybe there's a good reason and maybe...
But it should be in here, then if there is.
If I could just, my interpretation of that means that this will be effect for a minimum of five years, it could go 10, 12, 14, it's actually not putting a limit. It just, that it will only, it will guarantee that it'll go five years and more. That's how I read it.
But then it says, following this period of time, the agreement may be terminated by 14 days advance notice for either party.
That's just a way to get out, so...
Yeah. Okay. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great document. I just suggest, I don't want to belabor the point, I think that there, we've got great partners and they're world-class and let's, if council's comfortable with that, I'd like to bone up on this thing and know everything there is to know about it. that, I'd like to bone up on this thing and know everything there is to know about it. Or maybe, okay, you know what? We should be very specific about this, actually. Okay, so I've learned that much. So maybe what we should do is try to get an example of other agreements like this to compare this one against and, and address the issue of what happens after five years. And I know that price would not be a part of this thing, but I can't help but, you know, say, well, okay, well, what's the, what's the deal with, how much are we gonna be paying for this excess heat?
Silvio's working on it. Would he be able to offer us any more information?
I think so. And I just didn't have time to have that conversation today, unfortunately.
And there's no time limit on this? There's no?
I don't think we're in a screaming hurry to do it.
Well, then let's not rush into something that we're not all completely.
Hundred percent sure of.
Yeah.
So does somebody want to make a motion to get some more information?
I'll make a motion that we get some more information on this and discuss it with Silvio and just.
Just refer it back to staff.
Refer it back to staff, sure. Do we need a motion back? Well, we got a motion for it, all in favor? Well done. Okay, great.
Who seconded it?
That was.
It's almost seconded, but I didn't.
Well, I got.
I made the motion and.
I was in all in favor too.
You were in all in favor?
I was, yeah.
Okay.
So if I get this clear, if I could just, Your Worship?
Yeah.
You want examples of other agreements?
Yeah.
A little bit about pricing if it's necessary?
Yeah.
The definition of a memorandum of understanding?
Sure.
So that you understand what the agreements are? And the length of the agreement? Is those, does that sound like what you guys are looking for?
Exactly. Thank you.
When you're referring to pricing, you're talking about, where it's talking about the.
How much you're gonna charge us for the excess heat? We don't.
Yeah. That's what I was kind of worrying about there, the way it was phrased. I thought, ooh, that's kind of uncertain too.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great. Moving on to the next item. Another report from our economic development officer. This one's regarding improvements of existing underpass, Vailmount, on the Vailmount-Swift Creek Trail. Basically what this is, is if you go to Swift Creek right down here, right outside Chambers, you can cross over to the Norley property, not really be on the Norley property, without going through traffic. So it'd be a great way for school kids if they wanted to come over and take a, you know, whatever, tourists when they want to get into town from that area without having to. Farmers market people, without having to get on the thing. And so this is a great, the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure is really, I shouldn't speak to this, actually, I should ask administration, but my understanding was this was, this is a project that Emma and Greg Bruce brought to us with the interest of saying, hey, that's, that's a little project that we can do and make this thing really work for the community. Is that?
What, what happened is he called me about having some money left, that they have some type of economic development type funding available for in their corridors. This was a recommendation because we were having trouble directing people around, especially the ones that walk from the Asian communities, if we could direct them properly without having to cross the highway. So I suggested to him that this might be something worthwhile. Greg jumped all over that. We just had to do, it's the land over there and who owns it? With our new mapping, we're finding out that it's not as complicated as we had thought.
Awesome.
So that's helping us to proceed. This is no guarantee we're gonna get the funding, but what it does is that, that the council is in favor of moving this forward.
And our only, so that's what I was hoping to hear, is that it was the MRT that came to us with this idea.
Yes.
So that's great. And then our only potential future expenditure would be some signage and we'll have better cost estimates closer to that date.
That's right.
And that would come from the tourism?
That could possibly come from there, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah. So a motion to, okay, Counsel Salt? Counsel Bullock? All in favor? So moving on to, there's no public works report or building inspector report or bylaw officer report. Moving on to the financial report. And this is a little ditty about the village's relationship with Varda. And we're going to bold, unknown places here. And it looks like we may, well, we'll see what happens. So the purpose of this report is to provide mayor and council with information regarding the history of a yearly twenty-five-hundred dollar grant provided to Varda. And, okay. What an amazing group Varda is and comments, counselors, of what we should do.
Where does the twenty-five-hundred dollars come from?
Our empty pocket.
So it's something that we have budgeted for?
In the past.
Okay. And we budgeted this year for it?
For.
Yeah, we had some for, yes, we were leaving it in until we had the discussion on it.
Okay.
You know, the report also lists the other tremendous ways we support that great institution. And I think out of all the ways we can support, I think we're actually insulting them by giving them twenty-five-hundred dollars. I think, you know, we, we offer them, they're, they're able to use that building, which they pay to heat, and that's not cheap. But I think we support them and we support them politically and we support them in many ways. And I think it's about finding the right way to support different organizations. And although we've done this in the past, I leave it to council, maybe, maybe there's, it's appropriate to change from the old ways. Or maybe those old ways are really important.
I really like the idea of putting that money towards, you know, helping insulate that building better, so not use space heaters and things like that, which helps both, both benefits, you know, Varda with their utility bill and the village with the upkeep of the building. That's just my opinion.
I agree with Counsel Bullock.
Because it says that the grant has been used for operating costs, so.
Just basically paying for the utilities.
Yeah, okay.
So if we make the building better?
Okay.
I mean, it opens up a whole ball of logistics as far as who does that maintenance now? I mean, is that, is that something that we can delegate to, you know, to staff already? Or, you know, who, who then takes that twenty-five-hundred dollars and buys insulation or, you know?
Who upgrades the building? I mean, the village owns the building, so it'd be up to, would be up to us to.
Twenty-five dollars, twenty-five-hundred cover the cost of re-fixing it?
Well, but you, you know, if we took little things every year to say, you know, what we can, we afford, what we can do with our twenty-five-hundred dollars this year?
Has that building been, gone through one of its yearly inspections yet?
Not this year, it's been through last year.
So maybe we need to do a bit of an inspection and find out what exactly would need to be done and how much it would cost and then see if the twenty-five-hundred is gonna cover that or?
I'm gonna tell you guys, I'm not really enthused about this money going to Varda in this way. Because Varda has the opportunity, they, they, they have a lot of responsibilities and they have, but they do have the opportunity to recover those costs and they've been successful. And I think we can support that without giving them taxpayer money. Do you know what I'm saying? They're a going concern. What I was trying to say about the building is that we give that to them for free, right? We're kind of really, and, and you know, and that's a really, that's a really great way for us to be supportive of them because it doesn't cost us money. And I think that that's really the way that I prefer to be engaged with these community organizations rather than handing over money. Like we talked about in other cases where people really need the money, creating dependency? Have we created dependency in the going concern of, of Varda? I, it's a well-managed organization and I want to support them. I don't want to make it seem like I'm being cheap with them, but we've done this and we don't really see why. And now we're just thinking up uses to use that twenty-five-hundred bucks? Doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
I think if we're gonna give that building for free though, we need to upgrade it to the point of where it's livable or where it's usable. I mean, they use it in the, in the winter. So to use all those space heaters and to, to, I've been to meetings in, in there in the winter, all winter long, and it's, it's not comfortable in any way, shape or form.
Your Worship, if you want to just refer this back to staff, we'll explore these options that you've thrown out there and bring back the report. Can we go from there?
Well, if, yeah, if council still wishes.
Should we not go consider getting a formalized basically, even if it is only for a dollar a year, like we have with some of the other organizations? You know, at least then there'd be a formal agreement in place of, maybe direct staff to draft up something as well?
Yeah, I think it's really, it'd be really intriguing for council to take a look at consistency among funding different organizations.
Yeah.
So anyways, that's all I'm gonna say about that, guys. What's, what's, what's the wish? Is to refer this back to staff? Is that the idea? And see what the options are?
Sure. Obviously it deserves a little more discussion than.
Okay, Counsel Bullock? Counsel Blanchette? All in favor? Okay. All right. Ooh, nice. Now we've got a report from the deputy corporate officer regarding a local government liaison with public health. What's, what's the name of the organization exactly?
Northern Health?
Northern Health. Oh, yeah, those, yeah. Oh, they are great partners. They are. Great. So we're, we need to update policy forty-nine and appoint a local government liaison. And it sounds from the background on this item that it's a pretty serious deal. Okay.
I think a recommendation that we approve the amendment to policy forty-nine and appoint myself.
But you're already appointing.
Yeah.
As presented, yeah.
Okay.
Your Worship, it was recognized that after our last meeting and we appointed Counsel Blanchette, that we needed to do a slight amendment to this policy because as it was ordered previously, it didn't include appointing councilors.
Okay.
It had just some staff members, so during our last policy review committee meeting, we decided we better amend this policy, not make that resolution, so.
Right here, the second.
I'm the second.
Excellent. All in favor? Well done. Super. Whoa, we're rocking this thing. I guess we're onto council reports. It's eight forty-five. We're on the clock, so.
Seven forty-five.
Seven, oh, seven forty-five. Ah, yeah. Feels right. Counsel Vladimir?
May tenth, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meet and greet, not on behalf of council, but on behalf of council and chamber. It was very good, actually. We had, I don't know, between twenty-five and thirty people show up, I guess, and welcomed the new taxi service and welcomed Lord Coe and had a silent, a silent auction and the junior rangers did a presentation for us. It was, it was an awesome night. And Counselor Salt and Counselor Holly were there as well. Oh, yeah. On May the fifteenth, I was on a two-hour Columbia River Treaty conference call regarding, they're coming here on June the eleventh, I believe, to do a presentation on the Columbia River Treaty. And on May the sixteenth, I attended the Varda board meeting. And lots happening with them. Their, the bridge should be installed this year, so.
The bridge?
The bridge for the, for the sled skiing in the winter. So I was pretty excited and that's all I've done.
Excellent. Nice work and everything.
Counsel Blanchette?
May tenth, we had the cemetery bylaw meeting. Then we had, May tenth as well, we had the community futures meeting, which is really interesting because as a small business owner, it was geared for small business. Then at night, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meet and greet, which was very good. May fourteenth was the first, the user group meeting that I attended and the sixteenth was policy meeting for the travel policy we're doing. The seventeenth was the emergency management workshop, which was really very, very interesting and I brought some literature from it. And we should look into our emergency program, seeing as we're all new. We should look into that and address it and know what we're supposed to do. So, and now I'm here.
I have one more comment, sorry. Tomorrow night is the first meeting of the fiftieth anniversary celebration at seven PM at the classroom on Gorst Street. And invitations went out last week.
Good.
From the village, so. Okay, sorry.
Very exciting.
Yes.
Counsel Salt?
Okay, on the tenth, I also attended the Vailmount area Chamber of Commerce meet and greet and had a lovely time and as Counselor Latimer mentioned, some really interesting people attended. It was really great to get an update on the junior rangers. They were even trying to recruit some volunteers and.
Which they did.
They submitted application forms, so I don't know, I guess I might be volunteering to go out with the junior rangers to do some things or even just drive, but still it's a little bit that I can do to help. And on the fifteenth of May, I attended the Vailmount wildfire protection prevention committee meeting. And we're very sad to hear about Byron leaving, but you know, he's got some other better opportunities elsewhere, unfortunately, leaving our community.
What?
Yeah. So, you know, we can't, can't deny them that, but anyway, so we were sad to see him leave, but the group is still doing some really good work. We had Harry Officer from Forest Management, and some other presentations as well from the, the Blackwell for our wildfire plan update. So we had some really good presentations from them as well to give us some updates on our, update and revise the wildfire plan that's starting to be reviewed.
Awesome.
Sixteenth of May, attended the policy review committee meeting, reviewing our travel policy and then voting the change needed to be done on what we just adopted for Northern Health Public Health Liaison.
Okay, awesome.
And Thursday, the seventeenth, as well, attended with Counsel Blanchette, the emergency management VC elective official workshop. And for me, some things were refreshers and it was nice to be able to put a face to the name that I've seen and heard many, many times, that was Bob Kelly. So it was great to actually connect with him and get a refresher on some things, but also to be aware and learn my role on this side of the position versus other staff member. And like Counsel Blanchette said, we, we all need to get together because everyone is new. We familiarized and learn what we need to look at and address, whether it's council or responsible for, not staff or responsible for. It just helps give us clarification. So it was a really, really good workshop and very glad I attended it.
We did that with the McBride counselors.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, we had Counsel Raj Raymond, she pronounced it, Irene.
Yeah.
And Counsel Raj Basra. And then there, she's with our community force, that group, our assistant.
She was with SES or something, was it?
Emergency Social Services, she's with them. And Sarah, I can't remember her last name, but, so yeah, it was nice to have them there as well. And we were able to kind of, you know, ask them some questions and they'd asked us questions. It was a really good group to bring something on as well.
Great.
And unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend on Friday, the eighteenth, the wildfire committee had the high school education program, spring peanut, educating the high school students about wildfire and fire smart. I believe we've had a good day there. And then today, we've got another policy committee meeting, I forgot that one. And, and I think we've, we've got to the point where we will be bringing a draft version of our updated travel policy, possibly to the next council meeting, possibly. And that's everything for today.
Great. Thank you.
I ran on.
No, that's good. Counsel Bullock? Yeah, no, that's, makes sense.
I don't have my schedule from the seventh to the twelfth, but on the fifteenth, we had an integrated community sustainability planning, which we're going to change the name of that soon, session at the Lions, which was great.
Yeah.
Because the door was open and the sheets were on the tables and people just rode and rode.
Community Sustainability Planning, which we're going to change the name of that soon, session at the Lions, which was great.
Yeah.
Because the door was open and the sheets were on the tables and people just rode and rode. It was great. Left for Prince George on the 16th and had the Regional District Meeting on the 17th. And I spent another night there. I took in a rural education meeting with a couple of members of the Regional District as well as School District 57 Representative Brenda Hooker. And it was a really opportune moment for me to be there because they kind of remembered about, ah, Vellmount, it's a rural school, too. So, there's some conversation going on about, you know, they're really excited about Dan Kinkle's idea of a mountain school, and they're going to support that. And, yeah, it was just great to be there. And today, we had a meeting with the daycare, and I'm here now.
Excellent. Thank you. I got, I got the skinny on the Regional District Meeting. It was really quite exciting.
Yeah, I can go on.
Yeah, but we won't. Okay, that's good. And I won't go on and on, too, as a, as a commitment. Really, really. Okay, so fantastic. I've been, it's been crazy. May's been a, a gong show, I think is what, how they call it. So, I'm not going to do this in any order, but the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan Night was just really amazing, and it was great to get people out there. And everybody's so jaded when they show up, but ask them to share their ideas, and that's where the magic really happens. Such great ideas and lots that we, that we hadn't anticipated. I scooted off from there and drove down to Pencton for the Mayor's Caucus. And that was interesting. A lot of us went down there on spec. Thank you so much for sending me and having faith. It wasn't really clear what we were going to be doing. Actually, we were doing really, really, really good work of connecting up municipalities separate from regional districts as a voice on dealing with the province. Because municipalities own 2/3 of this province's infrastructure. And we get about 8% of the tax revenue, right? You know, it's kind, it's, it's just an interesting number, right? There's lots of stuff that's a little bit out of whack. And I mean, I, this is not a dig at our MLA, it's not a dig at the, it's not a dig at provincial politics, it's just sort of a reckoning to say, wow, we're in charge of a lot of stuff and we're always scrambling. So, how do we, as municipalities, in charge of all this gear, keep it up and running? How do we struggle through? How do we address downloading, right? Because sometimes the province or the federal government just stop doing things. Sometimes we get into situations where we need to do, we do, we end up doing things to qualify for grants that if we had our way, we probably wouldn't be doing. You know, or we do them in a way that's tailored to fit the grant thing. And I mean, hey, guys, we own 2/3 of Canada's infrastructure here. Like, we need, we need, we need clarity around what we can do. We need certainty in terms of funding opportunities going forward. And the hilarious thing was, I was in the room with Dean Fortin, Mayor of Victoria, and Gregor Robertson, Mayor of Vancouver, and we were talking, and, and many, many small communities all around the province, north to south. And we all faced the very same issues. And so, it was just fantastic to get together and raise our voice in unison. There was some concern, a lot of concern among our group that we might be duplicating something from UBCM or it might be a sort of wasteful or something. I can, I can tell you absolutely, it wasn't, it was, it was really fun. When I got back, I heard news that the, the SIMC, our neighbors to the south, and the First Nations of this place have elected a new chief, Rita Matthew. And I got to meet her. She chaired our first community-to-community forum here at the, at the Best Western. And she's a great person also. What an amazing group dedicated to education and really interested in forging a really strong relationship with our community. What a great opportunity. And they've got three new Councillors there and lots of youth and lots of energy, and I think they're just going to be great partners. So, I would actually like out of this report, if it's possible, I wonder if there'd be support to send her a letter of congratulations to Chief Rita Matthew, she's chief-elect right now, on her, on her election.
Yes.
Great. Super.
What is she supporting?
I'll have a, Counsel Bullock, Counsel Salt. Counsel, yeah.
What is she supporting? Do you know?
I don't know, but maybe, yeah, we should try to take, take a trip if we could, eh? That'd be fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. So, we'll have staff look into that for us. Great. Great. And then, anyways, yeah, things have been pretty busy for me. May, it seems to be like a, a, a major point of lots of things happening. The NCLGA and everything else. But I, I, rather than going through the calendar thing, I just want to say, I've been taking the opportunity to tell people about where Vellmount is at. And the attitude I try to take is, we've got a lot of great projects on our plate, but our hope doesn't rest only with those, is that we're doing the hard work here as a community to build up from what we've got. So, even if none of these fantastic projects happen, we're going to make it by pulling up our bootstraps here. Because we're in a great community, we know it, we're in a great place, it's a beautiful valley, and we have opportunities. We need to find them, seize them, attract the people here who are going to do them, support the people who are already here, support the local businesses who are going to expand and grow and keep a positive attitude on, because that's, that's really the difference. And that's also something I found heavily reflected in the Mayor's Caucus. Those people are a very positive group. I, I just want to very quickly talk about the results of the Economic Roundtable because it's so groundbreaking and I can do sort of a news release, in fact, like in my reporting days. Like, I'm, I've got something valuable and recent to share. That group is very much in support of the Vellmount Glacier Destinations Resort, as I, as I said. And every project that we've got going on in the bush here, the, the Swift Creek Trail, the Mountain Bike Park, the Crystal Ridge Sled and Sis Ski, Cranberry Marsh, and our tourism plans, they've got some big, big ideas on doing something even bigger than just McBride, Vellmount Dunster, but also right down to Barrier. And, and widening out that corridor, I'm excited about it. We'll have to see what it looks like. But we are getting major, major support from the provincial government. And once again, the support is not, it's not cash on the barrel or anything like that. It's, it's just to try to help us through these regulations and get things done. And God knows we need it because it's a very complex regulatory regime. I just said that.
We're in a fast track.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, fast track. Fast cats. Okay. Great. That's all I'm going, yeah. I could go on and on and on. Yes?
I'd like to add one thing. This week is National Public Works Week, so I'd like to extend a tremendous thank you to all our public work staff for all of our work they do every day, day in, day out, to ensure that our infrastructure continues operating for all our residents.
Yeah. Amen. Okay. Super. Can you, will, will you folks carry that on to the staff?
Absolutely.
To Victor and, and hopefully, he'll carry it beyond? Yeah, that's great. Okay, super. So, that's, that's my, my quick and dirty report. And I'll just add that tomorrow, I'm off to Castle Guard. Dear. Yeah.
I wanted to say that.
I guess I did. Okay. Yo, that was your mistake. Okay, so, is there a, is there any new business? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. We've, we've got the list of outstanding previous Council Resolutions. We don't need to do anything with that. Calendar of Events, take a look. Fantastic, nice calendar. I'm sure it's full, I can't really see it here. I know mine is full. And that moves us into the public comment period. And I'm just going to read a little something because our, our public comments are getting a little wild and woolly. And that's good, and we appreciate that, and we, we really welcome that. But we just thought, we had some advice, we had some heavy hitters here at our last meeting, and I said, hey, you know, here, here's a way to make this thing really, really shine. So, for this public comment session, members of the public may address Council at the end of the meeting for a maximum of two minutes, just for the sake of time. And that's basically it. And I also, there's a sentiment here that, please address the issues that we're dealing with in this, with this agenda. So, are there any comments from the public? Okay, I don't see any takers and I'm not going to incite tonight. So, that's, that's good. I see that Rick Corweho is here. Congratulations on starting the taxi service. I saw you driving around today. That rig looks beautiful. And I'm so happy to report to people that we can drink again.
Well, and, and arrive home.
And arrive home.
Hopefully, Lord willing.